Begin recording. Great, thank you all for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner to Order. For the record, today is November sixth, twenty twenty four at ten AM. We have two items on the agenda today, beginning with number CUP twenty four oh 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 four. A request for approval of a conditional use permit, or CUP for short, to maintain the use of shipping containers associated with an existing IGA grocery store located at one oh one Chance Al Amir, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. My name is Peregrin Sorter. I'm a hearing examiner with Lamner Law, whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. And it will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the proposal complies with the city comprehensive plan and the specific criteria for approval of a conditional use permit. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing. These would include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and site plan, various notice materials, and the applicant SEPA checklist. So I'll go ahead and admit those exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, just please let me know when it's your opportunity to testify. Now we'll go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under author affirmation. Because were my decision to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying, just to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal. So that after the record closes, I'm able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we're going to be following today, is first we'll hear from city staff, who will provide an overview of the proposal along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we'll hear from the applicant and see if there's any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. And finally, following any public testimony, we will turn back to the applicant and city as necessary for any response. So with that, I think we can get started. Who's going to be presenting on behalf of the city today?
I will, Your Honor.
All right, let's get you sworn in. You swear or affirm to tell the truth in any testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And if you can just go ahead and spell your name for the record and explain your role at the city?
Yeah, good morning. My name is Marshall Reed, spelled M A R S H A L L. Last name is Reed, R E A D. And I serve as the lead planner for the City of Ocean Shores and shoreline administrator and have prepared documents for today's hearing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. Did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review in advance of this hearing?
Yes, they did.
Great, so you can go ahead and proceed with your presentation whenever you're ready.
Okay, again, this is a hearing for conditional use permit twenty four zero 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 four for Ocean Sunset LLC, which is the IGA grocery store in Ocean Shores. The application was submitted on September ninth, twenty twenty four. We prepared a staff report beginning in October of twenty twenty four. The purpose is an application for a conditional use permit to maintain the use of existing storage containers on site. The applicant for the project is Vince Iannicello. I'm sorry if I butchered your name there. He's the IGA manager located at one oh one Chance Al Amir in Ocean Shores, Washington. The project description, the name is IGA grocery store, the legal property description is Division seven tract A. Physical address at one oh one Chance Al Amir. The size of the proposal is six shipping containers per the site plan. The existing conditions, the zoning of this parcel is B one retail. The land use is, it shows it located in the gateway corridor. Surrounding conditions for the zoning to the north, we have B one retail commercial. To the south, east, and west, the same, all B one retail commercial properties. Land use designation on all four directions, north, south, east, and west, located in the gateway corridor. Existing land use. All four directions, north, south, east, and west are B one retail commercial establishments. Background, the property is located in the northeast quadrant of Ocean Shores in a B one retail commercial zone. In the B one, in the B one zone, it is designated that uses that have some outdoor characteristics may be permitted if it can shown that such outdoor activity is customarily a part of such uses, or that some public benefit will accrue by location of such use in the district. Examples of these type of uses, as outlined in the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, would be automobile service stations, public buildings and facilities, nurseries, lumberyards, and other uses of a similar and compatible nature. Notice of this hearing was sent out scheduled for Wednesday, November sixth at ten AM, were sent to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on October twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, as required by the Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty two oh ninety. Hearing information was also made available on the city website. Attached are copies of the notice and hearing and mailing list. Notice of the public hearing was provided to the Daily World Newspaper for publication on October fifteenth and October seventeenth, twenty twenty four additions. The standard of review seventeen fifty two oh fifty, criteria for consideration of a conditional use permit. Before any conditional use permit is granted, the hearing examiner must determine the following. The use applied for is either listed in the conditional uses allowed in the district, or that it is significantly similar to one or more of the listed uses. Approval of the permit will be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, and would not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. Granting of the permit would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. And the last thing would be that no nuisance to life, limb, or property would develop. The use applied for is not specifically listed in the conditional uses allowed in the district. However, an argument may be made that some public benefit would accrue by having a more thoroughly stocked grocery store. Under conditional uses, the following uses may be allowed in the B one zone section seventeen thirty four ten upon approval of a conditional use permit in accordance with the provisions of seventeen thirty four ten through seventeen thirty four oh sixty. The purpose of this district is intended for retail commercial uses, providing day-to-day goods and services, financial, professional, personal, and commercial services are intended for this district, as well as mercantile, lodging, food, and other common goods and services. All uses and structures are to be of good appearance, well-designed, and free of hazards, nuisances, or other unattractive attributes. Section F, uses that have some outdoor characteristics may be permitted if it can be shown that such outdoor activity is customarily a part of such uses, or that some public benefit will accrue by location of such use in the district. Examples again would be like an auto service station, a public building, facilities, nurseries, lumberyards, and other uses of a similar and compatible nature. Conditions, should the hearing examiner approve this conditional use, construction must meet all current building, construction, and fire code requirements, and no additional containers would be allowed beyond what is located there already today. And that concludes the staff report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. I do have a few questions for you. So my understanding from your staff report and the materials is that these shipping containers are already located on site. So the applicant seeking an after-the-fact permit to allow for their continued use, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then your analysis, you analyze the use as having outdoor characteristics under seventeen thirty four oh thirty F, but am I correct in my understanding that these containers are being used for storage associated with the primary grocery store use of the property?
Yes, that's my understanding. They're providing extra stock space for 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 goods that would be used in the grocery store.
So this this area is not accessible to the public, it's employees that go to these containers and restock the store, and we can ask the applicant about that when it's their opportunity, but is that your understanding?
Yes, that is the case. And recently, the containers have been fenced in so that they're more shaded from the view of the public, and there's less accessibility to the public, to the to the units themselves.
So that it would seem to me that the youths fall squarely within the storage unit conditional use under seventeen thirty four oh thirty. E, have you considered that?
I, you know, I hadn't considered that until you just said that. They didn't seem, because they're not rented to the public, or they wouldn't be available to the public for their use, it it didn't fit neatly into one box or the other.
Yeah, it would it would seem to me my interpretation of that, you know, that these would be storage units in conjunction with the primary use. So I I would think that I would analyze it under that provision, unless you have some other reason not to do that.
No, that seems like a reasonable approach.
Okay. Wow, that just seems like a cleaner kind of analysis, so. And then you did mention that these containers are now fenced, does and this fencing does provide some visual screening from the public, okay. And the city didn't find any health or safety issues with this use?
Yeah, no, we have.
And then I just have, oh. I noticed that my exhibit packet contained the SEPA environmental checklist, but would the city ultimately determine that this would be exempt from SEPA review?
We, well, we didn't receive any negative comments back from the agencies that it was distributed from.
I I would just note that by my calculations, the net square footage of these existing containers would not exceed the four thousand square foot threshold that triggers SEPA review.
Right, so that could be exempt under the minor new construction.
Yeah, so would you agree with that? So I I want to put on the record what the city's determination as to the SEPA requirements would be.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay, so that would be exempt. And then the last thing I have for you, in my exhibit packet, let me open this up. The published notice. If you can find that indicates that the comment deadline was October eighth, twenty twenty four, and that appears to be a mistake because the published notice didn't occur until October fifteenth.
That's the, yeah.
I have that at, I guess, age eight of my packet.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna have to double check that. My copy shows that that the November fifth was that date for public comment. No later than four P M on November fifth, so it it's possible that you do not have the most current copy of that.
Okay, yeah, mine says written comments must be received by no later than one P M on October eighth.
Yeah, that would be a mistake.
Okay, well, if you have an updated copy to send me, just so I have a clean record, that would be great. In any case, can you confirm that the actual published notice provided a correct written comment deadline?
Yes.
Yes, we can confirm that.
Yeah, and what what was that comment deadline, just so I can note that?
It was November fifth, twenty twenty four, at four P M.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. I don't have any additional questions for the city at this time. Were there any other, any other members of city staff that wanted to testify on this matter?
Not at this time.
Great, so who do we have on behalf of the applicant here today?
We have Vince, the store manager, and Tyler representing the the application.
Okay, which one of you wants to take the lead here?
I will.
Tyler?
All right, let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Great, and for the record, can you go ahead and just state and spell your name and explain your role with this project?
Yes, sir. My name is Tyler Myers, spelled T Y L B R. Myers, M Y E R S. And I am the owner of the and president of the Myers Group, which owns the Ocean Shores IGA grocery store.
Great, thank you for being here today. So now is your opportunity, if you want to present any additional information about the proposal that you'd like me to know.
Okay, thank you, first of all, for the opportunity. I think Mr. Reed did an excellent job of outlining the situation. The only thing that I would add would maybe be some some information on on how the operation is impacted by the the containers. When we bought, purchased the store originally, back in nineteen ninety five, the the previous owner had trucks and all sorts of vehicles on the east side of the building. Primarily because in Ocean Shores, in the grocery industry and the grocery business, we have multiple vendors. And because of the distance to get to Ocean Shores, we struggle continually to try and get vendors to come to Ocean Shores on a regular basis. So as a result, you end up with a situation where you have to have backstock. Okay, being really the primary grocery store in Ocean Shores is critically important that we have food on a consistent basis to the to the consumers, obviously. So as a result, there's always been some form of storage on site. This is really due to the fact that the store is a little small, and particularly the back room area is is very, very much undersized for the the business that we have in Ocean Shores. We've tried on multiple occasions to get a new store built through the landlord, and for lack of a better word, we've been left at the altar three different times on trying to get that that done. Have have we, and when we do eventually get a new store in the City of Ocean Shores, I assure you, we will have a back room, and we will never have storage containers outside. In the meantime, in order to satisfy the needs and have product, we we need those storage containers. The storage containers are not all dry storage containers. They are also refrigerated and frozen, so it's it's a it's a a mix of of use. Over time, look, we recognize these are not the most attractive ways to do business. We have, particularly in the last two years, spent quite a bit of time and energy and money to try and beautify it the best that we could, so we have installed fencing with slats so that they are not see-through. Those are, those are green, and then we've also painted the the containers the same color so that they don't stick out any more than than is necessary. So we've tried to do a good job on our part to try and contain what we have, but they they are a necessity to our business. If we if we didn't have those, the risk would be not having product for the consumers. Our wholesalers, particularly since the pandemic, have become much more stringent on how often they're willing to deliver. We've also had, as you've probably known, reading in the paper, et cetera, supply chain issues. So having that backstock is really critical to not only our business, but also to the consumers of Ocean Shores.
Great, and did you hear my question to Mr. Reed about public access to these storage containers, and did you want to address that?
Well, yes, I did. And I think the fencing did a couple of things. One, it contained the product and everything in there, but it also did make it so that the public can't necessarily access those.
And would you have any issue with me imposing a condition prohibiting public access to the the storage containers?
Not at all. We'd actually appreciate that.
And then, did you have an opportunity to review the conditions that were recommended by city staff? And would you have any issue complying with those conditions?
I do not. Mr. Amicello might have a comment on those, but I did not.
Okay, great. Well, I don't have any further questions for you if the other member of your applicant team would like to testify, he can do so now.
Okay, thank you.
Let's let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Great, and can you state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Vince Iannicello, V I N C E I A N N I C I E L L O. And I'm the store manager at the store.
Great, Mr. Amicello, you can provide any additional comments that you would like?
Just a few. One is, we did recently add additional deliveries to try to minimize the impact, but the volume at the store is just so great that, at this point in time, we're getting four loads a week from just our regular wholesaler. And then we're, and that's amounting to probably about almost three thousand pieces of freight that we get in on a weekly basis. Some of it being backstocked so that we can, that we can put into the containers to get us through, even the days that we don't have deliveries. And with our, that's just the regular warehouse with DSD, we're probably looking at about another thousand pieces. And a lot of those vendors will only come around once a week to deliver because we're so far out in the middle of the nowhere type thing. So it's just, it's every bit of area is used as well as possible, and we've tried to even increase more loads, but like Tyler was saying, our warehouse is not looking to help us that way.
Great, thank you. Mr. Reed, are there any members of the public in the room that wanted to testify in this first matter?
Yeah, no, there are not.
Okay, let's turn to anyone on Zoom. If you are a member of the public wanting to provide comments on this, if you can raise your hand or turn on your video, unmute. I see Susan Connery. Let's go ahead. Hi, did you want to comment on this matter?
Yes, please.
Let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do indeed, thank you.
Thank you. And can you just spell your name for the record?
S U S A N. Last name, C O N N I R Y.
Thank you, Ms. Connery. You can provide any comments?
Thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate hearing all of the information from the applicant. As a customer of the grocery store, I am delighted that this has come to this point, and that hopefully you will find that they are able, given the changes that they've made and the perhaps additions that you add, that they will be able to continue doing what they've been doing. As a member of the public, I don't find it a problem at all, particularly now that they have the fencing, you can't see through it. The idea that you put on that the public is not allowed to access, perfect. None of us, I don't think, ever have an interest in going back over there. The fact that the grocery store works so hard to bring the goods in, and we certainly understand the problem being out in the middle of nowhere. So I do hope that this goes through and that they are able to maintain what they have. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Great, thank you for being here today. Is there anyone else that is logged on remotely that wants to provide comments on this matter? Can either hit the raise, raise hand function or unmute? Or turn on your video and wave? Okay, I'm I'm not seeing anybody else, so I guess let's turn back to the city if you have any last thoughts on this matter?
No, I don't, Your Honor. I I do like the idea of reviewing this under the storage units code and and that that does seem to be a fit that will put it in a a more uniform box there.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. Any last comments from the applicant?
No, sir, just thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. So I am gonna go ahead and adjourn this first matter, and I don't say this often, but this proposal seems very straightforward to me, so it is my intention to issue a decision approving the CUP with the city's recommended conditions and my additional condition. And I will issue a decision within ten business days reflecting that. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Gentlemen, have a good afternoon. Anything else, we'll do. Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have number V A R twenty four oh 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 four. A request for approval of a zoning variance to reduce the minimum square footage required for a residential dwelling in order to allow for the development of a three hundred and eighty-four square foot dwelling on an approximately point two five acre property located at six six eight Duck Lake Drive Northeast, in a manner avoiding additional impacts to what I understand is a mitigated wetland buffer on the property. The exhibits I received and reviewed in advance of this matter include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, a two thousand twenty-two wetland report prepared by Convergent Ecosystems and various notice materials. So I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Again, should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. And who do we have, and you can take a moment, but who do we have presenting on this next matter today?
I'm gonna go ahead and present this, Your Honor.
Okay, great. So you are still sworn in, Mr. Reed? And first, I guess, did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I would review?
Yes, they did.
Great, so whenever you're ready, you can begin your presentation.
Okay, thank you. So as stated in your summary, this is a application for a variance to allow a house to be built smaller than the minimum required square footage as outlined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty two ten D of six hundred and fifty square feet. We received an application on September fifth, twenty twenty four, and began the report, staff report, on the eighteenth of October, twenty twenty four. The application is to deviate from the minimum square footage identified in seventeen fifty two ten of six hundred and fifty square feet. This would allow construction of a single-family residence that does not create additional impacts to a mitigated wetland site located in an R C six single-family zone. The applicant is Lori Reagan Anderson, located at twenty four two oh six Southeast two hundred and forty-eight Street in Maple Valley, Washington. The name of this project is Lori Reagan Anderson, variance twenty four zero 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 four. This is located on parcel nine zero nine zero 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 four zero 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 Division five and Lot forty. Physical site address of six six eight Duck Lake Drive Northeast. This is a ten thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot lot. And the impacts, we are, we are trying to obtain no net loss and no expansion of impacts beyond what was authorized by a wetland mitigation agreement. The request is to construct a sixteen by twenty four, which is three hundred and eighty-four square foot, one-story studio with a loft. The existing conditions, the lot is owned R six C. Land use designation is single family. The surrounding conditions to the north, we have an R To the north, we have an R six C uh, modified mobile home. This is the zoning designation. To the south, R six C. To the east, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife lands. And to the west, R six C modified mobile home. The land use designation on the north, south, and west is all single-family. To the east is natural. The existing land use. To the north and south, there are single-family residences developed, um. Uh, on the south side, there is a residence, uh, vacant undeveloped land, and to the east is uh, natural. Um, to the west, we have single-family vacant. Uh, residential vacant undeveloped land. And the background, the subject property addressed at six sixty-eight Duck Lake Drive Northeast is located in the northeast corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly six hundred and sixty feet to Fathom Street Northeast. The property is owned six feet, uh, the property is owned R six C, and a single-family dwelling is a permitted use in this zone. Um, notice of this hearing was sent out uh, for a variance hearing scheduled for Wednesday, November sixth at ten A M. Were sent to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on October twenty-fifth, as required by the Ocean Shores Municipal Code. Um, hearing information was also made on the City of Ocean Shores website. Uh, notice was also sent uh, for this public hearing to the Daily World Newspaper for publication in the October fifteenth and October seventeenth editions. Uh, staff analysis, um, staff have determined that this proposed development project is listed as a permitted use. Uh, as defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen twenty-seven oh twenty A. Um, and that wetlands and buffer exist on this property and surrounding parcels. The purpose of this variance um, is to allow use of the parcel, which would be allowed and is in all respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city. Provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impacts to any wetland or associated buffer are applied. Um, by allowing a structure smaller than that required by seventeen fifty-two ten Table D. The applicant wishes to further avoid and minimize impacts to the wetland and buffer of this parcel. Uh, while by while building a site that would provide an area for accessory structure, off-street parking, and a small dwelling of eight hundred, uh, excuse me, of three hundred and eighty-four square feet. Um. The standard of review, the process to obtain a variance shall be the same process and criteria applicable to a conditional use permit. Um, in seventeen fifty-two oh thirty criteria, before any variance may be granted, the hearing examiner shall determine. Uh, A, that because of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, to- topography. Location or surroundings, the strict application of the title would be found to deprive the subject property um, of rights and privileges in void. Enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under is identical zoning classification. And also that the granting of the variance would not materially be detrimental to the public welfare, welfare, or interest to the public property. Or improvements in the vicinity and zone in which the subject property is situated. Um, the code analysis, this project would be allowed under seventeen twenty-seven oh twenty. Uh, as a permitted use, um, the density regulations, subdivision short plats, replats, and other boundary line adjustments shall have a minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet. This meets that minimum. Um, the development would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and would not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. Um, this district is intended for low-density, long-term, double-wide, or larger manufactured home occupancy. As a single-family dwelling in order to assure act adequate light, air, open space, privacy. And the protection of property values while providing opportunity for affordable housing. Other uses should only be allowed if they are compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest. Um, where the proposed use appears consistent with the purpose of the district. The um, proposed site plan, as proposed, would not conform to the table located in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two ten D. This table requires the structure to contain a minimum square footage of six hundred and fifty square feet to conform to all city standards. Um, approving the application would reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. There's no indication that allowing this size, single-family residence in the zone would create any nuisance to life, limb, or property. And um, should the hearing examiner approve this proposal, the planning department recommends conditions as listed. In addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. Uh, construction must meet all current planning, zoning, building, construction, and fire code requirements. And it must adhere to all conditions outlined in the Wetland Mitigation Sales Agreement recorded against this parcel. And adhere to all conditions outlined in the Wetland Mitigation Sales Agreement um, recorded against the parcel. Um. And that concludes the um, the uh, staff report for this application.
Great, thank you, Mister Reed. Uh, I think you have clarified this uh, for me, but I was a bit. Uh, unclear when reviewing the materials, but is my understanding correct that the? The applicant has already received approval for wetland buffer impacts? And what is before me today is simply a request for a variance. To allow for the proposed residential structure to uh, have a smaller square footage than otherwise allowed in the code.
Yeah, yeah, this um, this parcel was actually the very last parcel that we conducted a. Uh, in-house R U evaluation and mitigation sales agreement prior to converting to using the hearing examiner process for the for this, so. Um. They they do have a fairly small footprint as outlined in the uh, in the application, um. And I guess the that's that's what we would like to consider is uh. Minimizing any additional impacts by allowing a smaller footprint home to be built.
That's kind of what I surmised. Um, is there, is that wetland mitigation agreement or? Decision, administrative decision available? To me, just as way of background, uh, I think that information might be useful for writing my decision. I know it's not. Uh, at issue here, the R U, but I would like to provide some background information. Is that something that can be made available to me?
Yes, we can provide the documentation that was used in uh, in approving this um. Uh, this use.
Yeah, and I don't need all the background stuff, just the the final decision or the the actual agreement, um. Was entered into would be sufficient. Um, great, thank you, and just forward that to me when you get a chance. Um, let's see, uh. And then in um, reading, oh, and so just to be clear. My decision on this application would not authorize in any way impacts to uh, critical areas on site. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, and then in reading the wetland report that was uh, conducted for the original. R U permit, um, it appeared that the applicant originally proposed to construct a larger residential structure. Just uh, because I'm curious, do you know why the plans changed? Or, and I can ask the applicant about this. Again, I'm just curious, it's not really pertinent.
Yeah, I I I'm gonna defer to the applicant, but um, as this, as this site was developed, um, when you put something on paper. Um, sometimes it it has the appearance of being larger than when you get on the ground and start walking around. And uh. You know, my my view of the parcel, um, and and the footprint that has been mitigated um, for construction. Is it's a pretty tight package, and um, if if you were to build a full-size, um. Uh. Development here and meet the meet the minimum of the table, then there would be very little room for parking or no yard and um. You know, it would it would make a very cramped um, site.
I see. And then, uh, has the required mitigation for the original permit been fully implemented at this point?
Uh, yes, it has.
Okay, so there's existing. Uh, delineation fencing on-site already and.
Yes, yeah, the the delineation fencing and the signage and everything has all been completed.
Great. Thank you. Um, I don't have any additional questions for you at this time. Uh, does the city have any other witnesses uh, that want to testify in this matter?
Uh, no, if I think we have our applicant is online, um. If she would like to provide additional comments, um, we're. We're ready for that, I guess.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. I do see uh, Lori Anderson on there.
Okay, I just unmuted myself.
Okay, uh, uh, I'll trust that to you. Oh, great.
Hi.
Hello, uh, if you can go ahead and raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
Great, so now is your opportunity, uh, if you want to provide any additional uh, details about the proposal. That you'd like me to know?
That'd be great, and I'll make it brief. Um, thank you, Your Honor, so much for your attention to this, and Marshall is fabulous. He's present, I mean, I can't really add anything to it, what he just said. But um, yeah, when I first bought this property, um, I really wanted to build a small cabin, little beautiful cabin. I'm not gonna do anything like, um. You know, manufactured home or anything, it's gonna be a beautiful stick built, but. Marshall's completely right. The way it came out. With, you know, fencing off all the wetlands. Uh, you really can't build a bigger house than what I've proposed. And without going in and having to bulldoze stuff, rip more stuff out, which I really don't want to do. And me and Marshall and the uh, wetland evaluator, we worked together to create this beautiful little site. The driveway, the clearing is all done, all the fencing is done, so it would be a real shame to go in there and start ripping stuff out again. It's just beautiful the way it is. And all my neighbors love me, they're thrilled with my project, so, um. I can't think of any good reason not to uh, go ahead, and I appreciate your attention to it, and if you have any questions for me, that's about it.
Yeah, I just, uh, one question, did you uh, have an opportunity to review uh, city staff's recommended conditions? And would you have any issue complying with those conditions?
I don't think I saw those.
I know Marshall read them, um. Just a moment ago, maybe he can do that again real quick, they're pretty short.
Oh, well, when everything he said just now was completely fine, I just don't think I'd seen an actual written document.
Yeah, the the recommended conditions would just require that uh. All construction meet uh, current planning, zoning, building, construction, and fire code requirements. And that. The project adhere to all the conditions that were in the Wetland Mitigation Sales Agreement.
Yes, absolutely.
Great, well, thank you. I don't have any additional questions for you. Thank you for being here today.
Well, have you have a wonderful day, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Marshall too, Marshall's great.
Yeah, thank you, Lori.
Yeah.
Now, are there any, um, I don't think we have any members of the public in the room, is that correct, Marshall? Okay.
You do not.
And then it looks like Miss Connery might want to provide comments on this one? You're you're still sworn in, so you can go ahead and uh, provide your comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had no plan to do so, but I'm glad I stayed on. I like what I hear today, and I am optimistic that you will approve this. Sounds like they've worked very hard together to make something that will be really very, very nice in that area. I am familiar with it. I'm delighted when you do the things you can to preserve as much as you can of the natural environment. It sounds like this one is particularly that way, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you for being here, Miss Connery. Um, and then there's uh, a Don Williams that I see on, if you did want to provide comments, you don't have to.
No, no comments, we do.
Thank you for being here today. So I think that's all we have for members of the public, uh. Uh, Mister Reed, did you uh, have any last thoughts on behalf of the city?
Uh, no, I think we've covered everything there.
Great, and uh, as with our first matter, this appears very straightforward, as I would not be authorizing any. Impacts and um. Uh, I have no issue with uh, reducing the footprint of uh. A a structure, uh, you know, close to wetlands, so I again, uh, intend to issue a decision approving this request. Uh, with city staff's recommended conditions. And I'll issue my decision uh, reflecting that within the next uh, ten business days. So, thank you all for being here. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn this hearing, and Mister Reed, if you could just, when you have an opportunity, uh, forward those requested documents to my office.
Yep, I'll get those out to you today. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Good, thanks, have a great day.
You too.